First, 2022, 430. We'll start out with the implication. You'll stand for me.
Father, we just thank you for this beautiful day that we have in March. And we thank you for the city of Bowling Green's recovery and that we're continuing to take care of our people and continue to take care of this community. We just thank you for the many lives that are here and the many lives that are working together to have a better government, to have a better community. We thank you for this day, to goodness, Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Father. Do our pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everybody.
All right. I don't have any special guests here.
You go closer. I'm not sure your mic is working.
Check. Check. There it is. Check.
Here we go.
Check, check.
Push it down a little.
It's muted.
Check. Is it working now? Yay, Nick.
Check.
Yep.
Way to go, Kate.
Plug it in. Did you plug it in, sir? No. All right. We will start out with a roll call. Mrs. Jackson.
Commissioner Beasley Brown.
Here.
Commissioner Hill.
Here.
Commissioner Perigin.
Here.
Commissioner Bailey.
Here.
Mayor Alcott.
Here.
Mr. Mizel, do you have any comments at this time?
Just the standard. If you are wanting to make public comments at the end of the meeting, please sign the list in the back corner of the room.
Thank you, Mr. Mizel. At this time, our first agenda item is approval minutes for a regular meeting, February 15, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Bailey. Are there's any comments or questions at this time? There are none. Roll call, please.
Eastley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal order number 2022-39.
Municipal order approving the promotion of Lizette Garcia to the position of administrative assistant in the Public Works Department.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Dana Beasley Brown, second by Commissioner Hill. Mr. Mizel.
We have two personnel items before you tonight for the Public Works Department. This first one is a promotion, and this is due to the retirement of Laura Brown. Many of you will remember Laura Brown retired last year sometime, and we are needing to replace her vacant spot of admin assistant. I'd like to ask Greg Meredith, our Public Works Director, to come up and make his recommendation.
Thank you. Good afternoon. I'm here today to recommend the promotion of Lizette Garcia to the administrative assistant position in Public Works Admin. Lizette's here with us today. Please stand. Lizette, again, has been working with us since June of 2020, right during the pandemic. She started at a great time, but she has since stepped up since the retirement of Laura Brown and taken on new responsibilities and filling that role very well, some of the things that she's doing in our office and our department. She's the administrative support, of course, for the Public Works Director. That's a hard enough job in and of itself, but besides that, she has increased level of responsibility for our financial and our payroll systems, which New World, Tyler Software. And she's also going to be the primary responsibility or primary responsible person for our APWA reaccreditation process, which starts next year, as a matter of fact, 2023. And so that takes place every four years, and I can remind the commissioners that Bowling Green is the only city in the state of Kentucky to have the Public Works Department APWA accredited, so we're really proud of that. Lizette has, again, started in 2020. She's a graduate of Warren Central High School, where she also worked as a substitute teacher. She was also the office manager for the Geo Center there on Warren Central's campus. Most recently, besides working in Public Works, she was an in-home specialist for the Family Enrichment Center, and so now she gets to enrich our family at Public Works. So we're very happy to have Lizette, and any questions you have, I'll be glad to answer.
Congratulations.
All right. Let's make this official. Roll call, please.
Eastley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Congratulations, Lizette. All right. Municipal order number 2022-40.
Municipal order approving the probationary appointment of Doug Hoots to the position of Operations Technician One in the Public Works Department.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Perigin, second by Commissioner... I'll give it to Bailey. Mr. Mizel.
We have a vacancy in our Operations Division, OMT One, due to resignation. I'd like to ask Greg to come back up and make a recommendation for this spot as well.
Sure. And I'm here today to recommend the appointment of Mr. Doug Hoots in our Operations Division. He will be in OMT One, Operations Maintenance Tech One. We currently have the vacancy, as Jeff mentioned, due to a resignation. This position is a grade 111, and it starts at the salary of $15.03 per hour. Responsibilities for this job description includes all maintenance of city-maintained right-of-way, which includes roads, sidewalks, drainage, structures, mowing, et cetera. And so with that, we, the Department, the Human Resources Department recruited for this position. There were 12 applicants, of which eight were interviewed. The interview panel consisted of Dave Delp, Ryan Johnson, Jeff Walden, and Kim Ives. Mr. Hoots, would you please stand? Sorry about that. Doug is a graduate of Cumberland County High School. He already possesses his CDL license from some previous work history, which included working with Bluegrass Dedicated and Buttram Farms as a driver. He also worked in safety when he worked at Bluegrass Dedicated. So we're really pleased to have Doug join our crew, and I'd be glad to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Meredith. Any questions? All right. Roll call, please.
Eastley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Congratulations, Doug. Municipal order number 2022-41.
Municipal order approving the appointment of Adam Shores to the Housing Authority of Bowling Green.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Perigin. I'm going to ask Commissioner Hill to give this next introduction for this nominee.
I was so excited to see this nominee on our agenda. Broadway United Methodist Church has a passion for our community, and a lot of it is due to Adam's leadership. Honored to have you here and be agreed to be a member of the Housing Authority Board. I think you're going to be a wonderful addition. I don't know how you do all you do, but thank you, and thank you for being willing to be a part of this board.
Excellent. All right. Any questions, comments? All right. Roll call, please.
Eastley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Congratulations, Pastor. Municipal order number 2022-42.
Municipal order approving the appointment of Tim Robinson to the Bowling Green Warren County Regional Airport Board.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Bailey. I actually have this recommendation for Tim Robinson. Tim Robinson was a prior police officer, went over to the Sheriff's Department and retired out of the Sheriff's Department. He has a high interest in aviation, actually in a different department, in drones. And drones is a growing evolution of what's happening across our world, and so he brings that expertise, but more importantly, he brings expertise from his experience with emergency management. Of course, we know what that means in our community, and many people don't know, our airport was also hit in the storm, and emergency management is critical. And so I've worked with Mrs. Harmon of the Airport Board and our airport manager, and she highly recommends this nominee, and so I am recommending to this board Timothy Robinson. Any questions? All right. Roll call, please.
Eastley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal order number 2022-43.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting bid number 2022-29 for police uniforms from CMS Uniforms and Equipment, Inc. of Nashville, Tennessee, and Galls LLC of Lexington, Kentucky, based on unit prices.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Perigin, second by Commissioner Bailey. Mr. Mizel.
This year was time to rebid the police uniforms and equipment, and we did that back in January. Before you tonight is the results of that. We had two bids submitted, one from CMS Uniforms and one from Galls, and we are recommending various groups be awarded to those two companies. They've got letters and are noted in your memo. Groups A, B, C, D, E, F, and I are... We recommend going with CMS Uniforms, and Group G recommending to go with Galls. We did not get bids on a couple of groups, but we will address those at a later point. And Chief Delaney is here if you have any questions on these.
Thank you, Mr. Mizel. Any questions from the board? No questions? Roll call, please.
Eastley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal order number 2022-44.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting bid number 2022-34 for storm-related right-of-way repairs from Contractors Corporation of Bowling Green, Kentucky, in the amount of $154,325.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Bailey, second by Commissioner Hill. Mr. Mizel.
So in the aftermath of the December 11th tornado, we suffered some damage to infrastructure, and Greg Meredith and our Public Works staff have gone out and assessed that damage, anywhere from pavement damage with trees falling on the edges of roads, curb and gutter, sidewalks. We had some fencing that was damaged along the back of the cemetery that we need to get repaired. We went out for bid for these repairs, and we got the two bids, one from Scott Murphy, one from Contractors Corporation, and we are recommending Contractors Corporation at the lower amount of $154,325. Greg and his staff did a good job of covering the whole city and making sure we got everything in this contract, I believe. Correct, Greg? And this will be submitted at a later point for FEMA reimbursement, and we'll make sure we can try to get all we can reimbursed on this contract. Greg, do you have anything to add, or Greg can answer detailed questions.
Thank you, Mr. Mizel. Questions from the board?
I thought this was a really reasonable amount, given the magnitude and the square mileage that this storm affected us with, so we were fortunate.
Questions? Roll call, please.
Eastley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal order number 2022-45.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting bid number 2022-31 for disaster debris monitoring services from Tetra Tech, Inc. of Louisville, Kentucky, in an amount not to exceed $100,000.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Perigin, second by Commissioner Beasley Brown. Mr. Mizel.
This item is, again, related to the tornado disaster back in December. I'd just like to say one thing. I feel like our Public Works Department really went above and beyond. We had debris pickup starting one week after the tornado had hit. Within a week, we had those big trucks out there rolling, picking up things. I'm going to turn this item over to Matt Powell. It's a little complicated, and I don't want to mess anything up, but this original bid or original contract was under the emergency purchase procedures, and we were required by FEMA to go back out, and I'm going to let Matt explain what we're doing tonight.
That's perfect, but you all are witness to a very rare occurrence, and that is I have notes. Apparently, this one's a little complicated. What FEMA requires is that at every opportunity, as soon as an organization is capable, that we issue work that is to be reimbursed in a competitive fashion. So while we followed all of our procurement procedures, everything that we did to acquire the two contractors, Tetra Tech and Crowder Gulf, was completely above board, completely the way we do things, we did issue emergency purchase authorizations for that work, as you all remember back in December 21. So at the first opportunity, we found ourselves with, you know, the hours between 10:00 and midnight to write some fresh bids. We did do that. So in mid-February, we went back out for bid to issue the remaining work under those two contracts competitively. FEMA demands that if we got better pricing, better bids from that competitive process, that we would have ceased that work and awarded it to the new contractors. In the interim, while we had those bids open, we completed the contract work for debris collection and removal, so that bid was canceled. With the debris monitoring services, there is some work remaining to be done all the way through the 12th of June of this year. We've got this award is going to extend for an additional 30 days, just to make sure we have plenty of time to handle that. It did wind up being the same contractor that we're already working with. So the important thing to remember here is that this financial responsibility, the amount of money that we're spending here, has already been approved in December. This is not new money. This is a portion of the money that was already approved. So we did receive two responsive bids, one from Vona Milton, one from Tetra Tech, which is the current contractor. Tetra Tech was the best evaluated bid, and so I'm recommending tonight that we award the remainder of the work to Tetra Tech and allow them to continue.
Thank you, Mr. Powell. Appreciate your diligent work from the get-go. If anyone doesn't know, when the storm hit, he literally went within the room and a team and spent about 72 hours just brainstorming. How do we... What are we going to do? How are we going to respond? And went out across the nation, making calls, and finding out what would be the best response for Bowling Green, and I believe that has happened. So congratulations on that and your continuation for all the work that has happened for Public Works and your team. We're very proud of everyone, so thank you. All right. Questions, comments?
You summed it right up. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Eastley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal order number 2022-46.
Municipal order authorizing the continuation of a mowing contract with Affordable Lawn Care and Pressure Washing LLC of Bowling Green, Kentucky, in the amount of $146,555.38.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Bailey, second by Commissioner Hill. Mr. Mizel.
So over the last couple of years, as we've grown as an organization and land-wise, we're at 41 square miles now. We manage this 41 square miles with roughly, what, 35...
33.
33 Public Works Operations Division staff, which is pretty much a mile per person or more, and we are maintaining roughly 65 acres of right-of-way. And in the summertime, that gets pretty busy, keeping that looking decent and keeping it mowed and clean. And so what we did last year is we went out and contracted this mowing work with Affordable Lawn Care and Pressure Washing and got a good deal with them, and we had an option to renew that, and we're coming before you today, before mowing season kicks in, to renew that option on this contract for $146,555. They are required to mow so often, keep it at a certain height, and keep it looking really good, which really frees us up to do a lot of other things in the city and with our 33 men and women that handled our Public Works Operations Division. So recommending that we renew the contract with Matt King at Affordable Lawn Care for the $146,555, which will cover roughly a little over 65 and 1/2 acres of right-of-way mowing. Greg is here, can answer any questions you might have.
Questions? Roll call, please.
Eastley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Ordinance number BG 2022-9, our first reading is non-binding.
Ordnance rezoning real estate. Ordnance rezoning attractive land containing 0.17 acre from GB General Business to RM4 multifamily residential located at Zero State Street, presently owned by Robert E. Petrie Testamentary Trust, George D. Lawson, Jr., trustee with Robert and Vicki Shadowan as the applicant.
So moved.
Second.
By unanimously everyone. Commissioner Perigin, second by Commissioner Beasley Brown. Mr. Mizel.
This was an 8-0 vote with the Planning Commission, and this is a really neat project that will be downtown, right there on the corner next to the post office, and 8-0 unanimous vote at planning and zoning. I think Brent Peterson is here, can answer any questions you might have.
Any other... Any questions? I'd be happy to.
Is it going to be all brick on the outside? What kind of square footage are you looking at for your apartments?
Actually, each apartment's going to be quite a bit different. The first level will be a small apartment that will be facing Circus Square Park. The second and third level will be split between a front apartment and a back apartment. We haven't settled on floor plans yet. The main apartment will be me and my home, which will be like a three-bedroom unit that will have garage parking, and that's about as far as it's been identified at this point. It's still very much a concept, so...
There you go.
Approval first. All right. Thank you, Mr. Shadowan.
Sounds great.
All right. No more questions? Roll call, please.
Eastley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal order number 2022-47. I'm sorry. Ordinance number BG 2022-10, first reading, non-binding.
Ordnance rezoning real estate. Ordnance rezoning attractive land containing 0.8663 acre from RS1A single-family residential and RM2 two-family residential to RS1C single-family residential located at 2410 Fitzgerald Industrial Drive, presently owned by Elijah Properties LLC.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Bailey. Mr. Mizel.
This was another 8-0 vote with the Bowling Green Warren County Planning Commission for property on the industrial drive, and Mr. Peterson is here, can answer any questions you might have on this one.
Questions at this time? None? Roll call, please.
Eastley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal order number 2022-47. I'm sorry. Ordinance number BG 2022-10, first reading, non-binding.
Ordnance rezoning real estate. Ordnance rezoning attractive land containing 0.8663 acre from RS1A single-family residential and RM2 two-family residential to RS1C single-family residential located at 2410 Fitzgerald Industrial Drive, presently owned by Elijah Properties LLC.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Bailey. Mr. Mizel.
This was another 8-0 vote with the Bowling Green Warren County Planning Commission for property on the industrial drive, and Mr. Peterson is here, can answer any questions you might have on this one.
Questions at this time? None? Roll call, please.
Eastley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal order number 2022-47.
Municipal order approving and authorizing the mayor to execute a community development block grant agreement with the Kentucky Department for Local Government, a legally binding subrecipient agreement with Live the Dream Development, Inc., and associated evidentiary materials.
So moved.
By Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Beasley Brown. Mr. Mizel.
This is the agreement that goes with the million-dollar grant we got for the affordable housing units that Live the Dream is going to do for us, getting us, I think, nine units. Is that correct? And this pretty much nails down all the requirements. Good memo on the first page there, telling you what the requirements are with the grant and the CDBG CV, and contract is right there behind it. And Brent and Nick are here to answer any questions you might have.
We'll make a note. We already approved the million-dollar grant. When the governor came with the million-dollar check, it was retroly the same million dollars that we had previously approved. It wasn't a second million dollars for this, so I told the governor, "We just got one." He's like, "Well, here's another one." Anyways, thank you, Mr. Mizel.
Any questions?
This is a comment. I always think that it's always in the best interest of our city to always look out for the, you know, someone that may not be less fortunate. So building affordable housing is always a good thing, so hats off to, like, the Housing Authority and for the Live the Dream.
Roll call, please.
Eastley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal order number 2022-48.
Municipal order approving and authorizing the mayor to execute a community development block grant agreement with the Kentucky Department for Local Government, a legally binding subrecipient agreement with Live the Dream Development, Inc., and associated evidentiary materials.
So moved.
By Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Beasley Brown. Mr. Mizel.
This is the agreement that goes with the million-dollar grant we got for the affordable housing units that Live the Dream is going to do for us, getting us, I think, nine units. Is that correct? And this pretty much nails down all the requirements. Good memo on the first page there, telling you what the requirements are with the grant and the CDBG CV, and contract is right there behind it. And Brent and Nick are here to answer any questions you might have.
We'll make a note. We already approved the million-dollar grant. When the governor came with the million-dollar check, it was retroly the same million dollars that we had previously approved. It wasn't a second million dollars for this, so I told the governor, "We just got one." He's like, "Well, here's another one." Anyways, thank you, Mr. Mizel.
Any questions?
This is a comment. I always think that it's always in the best interest of our city to always look out for the, you know, someone that may not be less fortunate. So building affordable housing is always a good thing, so hats off to, like, the Housing Authority and for the Live the Dream.
Roll call, please.
Eastley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal order number 2022-48.
Municipal order approving amended and restated workforce coordinator agreement among the city of Bowling Green, Warren County, and Bowling Green Area Chamber of Commerce.
So moved.
By Commissioner Beasley Brown, second by Commissioner Perigin. Mr. Mizel.[1610.91]
By Commissioner Beasley Brown, second by Commissioner Perrigen, Mr. Mizel.
This workforce coordinator contract is something we started years ago with the Chamber of Commerce, really back before we got things going with the South Central Kentucky Workforce Development Board. This was kind of our position that we used to bring in talent and recruit people here. And what's happened is this has become even more important with our workforce participation efforts now. And so what this position is doing for us now is helping us recruit the 1,500 or so graduating seniors each year that are in our community from our various high schools and putting them in the pipeline for our workforce going forward. And so Meredith Rosansky is here with us tonight, and I'd like her to come up and maybe talk a little bit about all the things they've been doing with, with the SCK launch and what this position has been doing for us. And there's metrics in the, in the back of your packet of all of the accomplishments that they've, they've had over the years. And I'll let Meredith take it away. There's an agreement that Hillary worked on for us in, in, towards the end, and I think we're just doing this for one year, two years, I'm sorry. And I'll let Meredith give you the details. Meredith, thanks for coming.
Thank you for allowing me time to speak to you. We greatly appreciate the partnership, and as Mr. Mizel remarked, we are trying to make sure that we are growing our own, and that's how you're truly successful within a community is retaining the young talent that you have. And so our SCK launch efforts are actually an acronym, so it's South Central Kentucky Learning About Unique and New Careers Here. So everything is geared around those in our K-12 system, which is our largest pool of untapped talent, for them to understand all the opportunities that are available to them here and showcase as many of those as possible. Our goal is for every student that walks across the stage of one of our high schools to have had a career-related experience before they graduate, which is very ambitious, but we do want them to know that there are plenty of opportunity here for them. So we did give you kind of a recap of the year with all the different events and activities. We're so thankful we were able to get back in the schools because 2020 was a little hard with COVID, but 2021 we came more back to normal. We did have our eighth-grade experience event, and we did hold it with just Bowling Green and Warren County due to COVID, but still had over 1,800 eighth graders participate. In 2022, we are going back out to the surrounding counties, so we expect to be back between 3,400 and 4,000 eighth graders. So if any of you want to come volunteer with us in October, we'd love to have you because it's the ultimate in control chaos. And then we are back to doing career shadowing, so getting juniors and seniors of high school out of the classroom and into businesses that they've identified that they're interested in, so that they can see for themselves what the world of work really looks like and what those career ladders are that are available to them right here. And we're doing educator externships again this summer, getting educators out of the classroom and into businesses, because let's face it, you know, if we're all talking about work at home, usually it's not positive. Not everybody's rushing home to be like, oh, my gosh, you wouldn't believe the great day I had. So we want to make sure that we're growing that knowledge base that everybody has of all the employers that we have and all the great opportunities that are available to them. And then also putting real-world experiences into the classroom. So we've made a tremendous amount of investments into our schools by creating career-focused models so that they're learning on the equipment that they're going to see in the workplace. I mean, I tell you, stay tuned. I can't tell you exactly what yet, but we have a very exciting announcement coming this calendar year in one of our high schools of a brand-new career-related field where the students will train directly in school. So we're super excited about that and adding more all the time. And then our newest endeavor is we don't want to leave out those college students that are in our community, both at WKU and Sky CTC. A lot of them aren't originally from Bowling Green, and so we want them to make sure that before they leave here, they understand what a great community this is and what a great opportunity this affords for their future. So we're working with Brent and his team and others to put together a piece that showcases the quality of life of Bowling Green and Warren County to them, also the career opportunities and what those sectors look like in our economy, some fun facts about what the employers are that are here. And in order to get those, those are not just going to be given out, they have to come to a presentation that's going to be given by one of our young professionals. Obviously, it won't be old people like me. And so we are mobilizing our BGYP group and those younger members of our chamber team to go to the Hill and go to Sky CTC to talk to students so that they understand there are really great opportunities for them to stay here after graduation. So trying to retain every single person that we can.
Meredith, question. So the SCK launch was started, what, five or six years ago?
Yes.
So your first, call it crop, of eighth graders would now be entering the workforce and have gone through that, if my math is correct. Can you talk about that, so?
And so, and the other piece that I didn't mention in here, so we also do what we call SCK launch job fair. So those high school seniors that are separating at, at graduation of high school and going direct into the workforce, either delaying post-secondary education or not quite sure what they want to do yet, and so we will have that May 6th. But we are trying to track, trying to figure out the best way to track those that are going direct into the workforce and those that are retaining. The problem is, is that even the state will tell you the, the data they capture isn't entirely accurate. So the schools are required every September to call all the students that graduated in May and ask them where they are, what they're doing. Are they working? Do they go in the military? Are they going to school? What are they doing? But like I said, even the state will tell you they don't rely heavily on that, not because the students don't tell them the right answer, but because typically the parents answer and they're embarrassed to say what their child is doing. And so we're trying to get a better handle on how do we make sure that they have a definite plan when they walk across the stage and we know where they're going before they leave the system. So we want to make sure that they understand there's opportunity for every student that we have. As fast as we're growing, there's plenty of opportunities for our kids.
Thank you, Meredith. I get to see this in real life in the high school, and I can tell you, when our students actually visit and see what's literally across the street from our high school, they're amazed. And they think that, you know, these are, you know, factory jobs, but they're realizing these are really technician-type jobs, highly technical jobs and high-paying jobs as well. And so they see the opportunity, and it's, and starting to infiltrate their idea beyond and what they can actually provide for themselves. So thank you.
Very, very technical positions. I think a lot of people, they still sort of have that perception of especially manufacturing being sort of dark, dirty, dangerous. But in this day and age, the technology is incredible. I had the good fortune of touring Graham Packaging yesterday. They make the all detergent bottles and others for Henkel and everything. There's like 10 people in the plant. There's these huge conveyor belts with these, you know, machines making all these bottles, and the people are sitting there standing by making sure the machines don't make a mistake. So it's really cool.
That's a cool point.
It really is.
I will add my stories, too. As a family resource coordinator at a local middle school, I also get to witness this impact it has on our middle school students who, you know, school's starting to get hard, and they're always coming in saying, you know, oh, what is, why am I ever going to use this math? When am I ever going to have to write this essay? And so they get this day where they are going from painting a car robotically with, you know, the, I don't know what you call it, headset on, then they are doing robot surgery with these robot hands. And then they go into, you know, this other section. I had this one student who was just really struggling, and I found him in this little simulator area where they were doing medical things, and he was stuffing tissue and fake bullet holes in a leg for like this EMT part. And it was, I mean, he was saving this leg, whatever it took. And then he was a little baby, and he was, this baby needs a CPR, and he was going to save this baby no matter what it took. And just to see him come alive and to see where this could lead was a game changer for this student. And just seeing every single student, just their light bulbs go off in their mind about potential careers they never would have had a way to understand and experience is such an incredible gift to all of our students. So thank you all so much for what you're doing and continuing that through high school and then college, you know, you being an important piece of how do we, again, retain those college students and, and making sure we're, we're creating this place that they would love to, to come to and stay after they graduate. So thank you for all you're doing.
Thank you. And I would be remiss if I didn't thank both chiefs. The Fire Department and the Police Department are huge hits on that eighth-grade experience day. You know, we always joke with the kids because they're like taking selfies in the back of the squad car, and we're like, that's the only time you're going to be in a cop car. But it is really amazing for them to see that there really are tons of opportunities for them, and the brand recognition, the feedback we get from parents is, it's the first time they've had a conversation about their child's future with them, and the fact that they can drive around town and they say, I know who that is, I know what they make, I know who that is. So it's really great. So thank you for the partnership.
No further questions? Roll call, please.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perrigen.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Ordinance number BG 2022-11, our first reading is non-binding.
Ordnance relating to budget amendment. Ordnance approving amendment number three to the City of Bowling Green, Kentucky Annual Operating Budget for Fiscal Year 2022.
移到 Second.
By Commissioner Perrigen, second by Commissioner Beasley Brown, Mr. Mizel.
So from time to time, we have to make some tweaks to our budget. We get donations, grants, we buy land every now and then, and have to, to adjust the budget. And what, what's before you tonight is budget amendment number three, and Katie's worked and with her staff on this. Most of it is new money that we've come in to, like donations and, and grants that we've, most of it we've already approved, and we're cleaning up on the budget side. And I'm going to let Katie take over and answer any questions you might have on this. Katie?
Again, majority of these items are donations that we've received, but also a lot of these items you've already approved with other actions, and so we're just following up now with some of the budget amendments to be able to process payments and that sort of thing going forward.
Thank you, Katie. Questions? All right, roll call, please.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perrigen.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Ordinance number BG 2022-7, our second reading ends binding.
Ordnance rezoning real estate, ordinance rezoning attractive land containing 1.16 acres from agriculture, AG Agriculture to OPR Office Professional Residential located at Zero Glen Lilly Road, presently owned by Southern Kentucky Fair, Inc., with J.B. Bridgman as the applicant.
移到 Second.
By Commissioner Bailey, second by Commissioner Perrigen. This is our second time for this reading. It was a unanimous 5-0. Unless there's any questions, there's none. Roll call, please.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perrigen.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Ordinance number BG 2022-8, second reading ends binding.
Ordnance rezoning real estate, ordinance rezoning tracts of land containing 31.51 acres from AG Agriculture and RS1A single-family residential to RS1D single-family residential located at a portion of Zero Clifford Way and Zero Juliet Way and Zero White Cotton Drive, presently owned by Rivers Landing Edge LLC with Mark Williams as the applicant.
移到 Second.
By Commissioner Perrigen, second by Commissioner Hill. This is also was a 5-0 at our last report of commission, unless there's questions at this time. Roll call, please.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perrigen.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Next is there's going to be a discussion of Downtown Entertainment Destination Center Work Session.
I'm going to ask Brent Childers to come up and present to you what we were proposing for the Entertainment Destination Center that you all requested us to put together back probably a year or so ago as one of your new endeavors, and I'll let Brent take it away. Brent?
Okay. Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. Pleased to be in front of you tonight to talk about Entertainment Destination Center. That is obviously a great title that the Kentucky Legislature came up with, but that's our working title for, at this point. We'll get into kind of some of the specifics. So I want to talk a little bit about the background of what this is and how this came to be, how we got to this point, and then where do we go from this point moving forward? As you read all the handouts that just came through, everything that I'm going to talk about is covered in there, but there's more detail on the handouts than what I'll go over. So all this started years ago when a group called Live Entertainment decided that Louisville was going to be the next spot for one of their investments of a venue entertainment space, and that, we know that as Fourth Street Live in Louisville. So that group went to the legislature and does what any good corporate entity does, and they lobbied the legislature to say, hey, we want you to create entertainment destination centers that allow for the carrying of alcohol across public spaces. And so they wrote very strict regulations that only fit in Louisville at that time. So fast forward a couple more years, Newport decides, we want to build Newport on the levy, and we want that same thing in Newport. And so they went to the, and worked it out with Kentucky ABC, and they got it approved. Fast forward a couple more years, Owensboro, our cousin up the road, up 165, decided that they wanted something similar as part of their downtown. And so you see this repetition, but it all started back then. But it also all started for us years ago because we decided as a community, as a, as a city government, as a county, as a TIF, as a partnering businesses and all the things that make up community, that we wanted downtown to be a destination. We wanted downtown to be a place. We wanted downtown to be the place that you went whenever you want to go watch a ballgame, right? The only place you can go watch professional sports in Bowling Green is downtown Bowling Green. It's the place where if you want to go see a play, a concert, any type of art or entertainment really is centralized downtown. It's where you go to have a nice dinner. It's where you go see Santa Claus ride on a fire truck first weekend, the first Friday in December, right? It's where you go walk around the, the lights at Christmas time. This is where you go to be entertained. And so how do we create a better environment for that? And this is one opportunity for that. This is not the only thing. There are other things going on with the addition of a downtown development coordinator. Now we've created another opportunity for growth and expansion of this. But what we're talking about is really a more focused area as part of our downtown. And so January of 2021, you all said, hey, staff, I want you to go look this up, figure it out, and bring it back to us. Well, since that time, we've went through year two of a pandemic, a tornado, whatever else has happened to us over the years, and now we're back. And so we're back to talk about what it is. No, just pick right there. That's good, right there. Yep, thank you. And so we're here to talk to you about it, but I want to kind of take you through. So January 2021, you all said, go forth and do it. We started our research. We also got, you all had the leadership and the vision of creating the position. We got that position filled right before that. We held a focus group where we invited some of our downtown businesses in and talked to them and said, hey, here's where we're at, here's what we're thinking, this is what we're looking at. What do you all think? And that group came in, and they gave us feedback, they gave us commentary, we worked through some of the specifics with them, and then we went back to work on it again. Had a stakeholder meeting, a much larger meeting scheduled for December 16th or 17th. That had to get postponed because something happened the weekend before, and so we pushed it back to last Thursday. And so last Thursday, we hosted a stakeholder meeting with about 50 people up in our community room to go through this exact same handout that I gave you all, a lot of the same commentary and all, some of them are here in attendance today, not all 50 unless I misread, miscounted the room, but some of the same people to provide you all with some of the feedback that we heard as part of that meeting last Thursday. And so now, here we are to you in March 2022 to say, here's what we came up with. And so what we're going to do is go through the who, what, when, where, how of, of a downtown EDC. So I talked about the why. Why do we want to do this? Because we're building this arts and entertainment destination, and this is an opportunity. So I've already talked about the why. Let's talk about the where. And so one of the things we looked at was, we just started with a map of downtown Bowling Green and started looking at, okay, where are things already going on? Where are events taking place? Where are people already concentrating? Where are, where is the density? And so obviously, the Hot Rod Stadium, Bowling Green Ballpark brings in a couple hundred thousand people a year as part of it. Skypack brings in tens of thousands of people a year. Circus Square is the home of Concerts in the Park, Harvest Festival, it's a main public event space in this area. But you also have Fountain Square Park, which has a concentration of a lot of our licensed premises, both bars and restaurants in and around Fountain Square Park. And so we started looking at this area and going, okay, where do we draw the line? Because there has to be a line. In EDC, the state says you have to have a line, and you have to define what that line is. So we started having that conversation of what does that line look like? What is that boundary? What is that geography? So as we looked at this, we've really focused in on this central core arts and entertainment district to define where, where do we want this area? Because based on what's already there. So what we came up with was this, and this is the beginnings of the, the branding and imaging. So this is what we are proposing to be our, and it should be in your, is it in the handout? Okay, it's in the handout. So you can see it there, too. And so you see the Bowling Green Ballpark, you see Circus Square, you see Skypack, you see Fountain Square Park. So the main borders are going to be 11th and Chestnut down to Sixth Street. The way it kind of worked out based on the development patterns of Bowling Green, it does have a stair-step effect to it, but we felt like this covered where people are already at, where people are, are the entertainment opportunities are, where things are. So this is what we are proposing to be the, the starting point for this. This is one of the maps that was in development. This was shared at last week's meeting, but this area will have a name, it will have its own brand, it will have its own logo. None of that is developed at this point. Some of those things are in process, but at this point, this is, this is the where of what we're talking about. And so the when is important because you have to define when. When is this happening? When is it not happening? And so what we wanted to look at was, this is something that this community has never had. This is something that this community is, is stepping into, and obviously, we want it to be a success. We want it to be a success for our businesses, we want it to be a success for downtown partners, for our downtown property owners, and our future downtown partners and property owners. And so when was important to us as this first step into this direction because we don't know what this will look like when it's actually here, so we want to step into it. And so for the when, what we are proposing is Friday and Saturday nights, Friday and Saturdays, within the hours of 11:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. All right, so Friday, Saturday, 11 to 10. All right, so Friday, Saturday, 11 to 10. Those are the hours. So this is not all night. This is not 24/7, 365. This is Friday, Saturday, 11 to 10, only when there's a special event. So let's talk about what that looks like, okay? So what we've said here is here's what we are saying are automatic triggering special events. So a city hosted or sponsored event, Harvest Festival, that is a city hosted event. Concerts in the park, downtown lights up, those are all city hosted, city sponsored events, Friday, Saturday. Those would trigger it. The EDC would be activated. Bowling Green Ballpark, they're having a baseball game, or they're having an event on those Friday, Saturday, between those times, it would be activated. So just because the Hot Rods have a Tuesday night game doesn't trigger it. Just because there's a Skypack event on Tuesday night doesn't trigger it. It's Friday and Saturday, 11 to 10. The other one with Skypack and Capitol Arts hosted performances during those EDC hours. So those are the ones that we are saying automatically trigger. This is gonna be on the back under the when. The other thing is, we also can't assume what the future events will be. We know what the events of the past are, but what are the future events that could happen? We know that we have International Festival every year. We know that we have the Science Festival. We have all these other special, private special events that occur in the community. But just because they occurred two years ago doesn't mean that they're gonna occur five years or something else isn't gonna come in. So we want to create an opportunity for new special events that aren't even ours, that are private special events to take place. But we had to define what would it take for them to trigger the activation of the EDC? And so what we looked at is those that go through the special event process, that means they're impacting some form of public property, a park, right of way, something like that. The event is open to the public. The event plans to serve alcohol or is open to the consumption of alcohol. And the event occurs during allowable hours, Friday, Saturday, 11 to 10. And the event takes place entirely within the EDC boundaries because we know that there are gonna be some events that do not, do not want alcohol as part of their event. Maybe a downtown 5K, maybe the Walk to Remember Sebernica. Those are still special events, but they might not want that. So the event hoster could request the activation of the EDC if they hit these four parameters. And so these are the four parameters that we set forth. We'll tell you, one of the comments that we did hear last Thursday morning was from the Corvette Museum, and their question was, could outside events trigger it, meaning down, events outside of the downtown? So there, so then it could be a destination for those events to come with their people downtown. And we said, at this point, no, because it wouldn't be triggering that special event process. So that is one question we have for you all because we haven't, between last Thursday morning and this morning, we haven't built all the parameters of what that would look like. If you all are interested in that and having this, let's say Corvette Museum Corvette Bash brings in 1,000 people or Corvette Homecoming brings in 25,000 people, but there's not one of these other triggering events going on downtown, could an outside entity request the activation of the EDC? And so that is one question because then we'll have to go back and build those parameters. Got questions, Sue?
Yeah, I'm confused why we are only going to be there on Friday and Saturday. Why is this not something that occurs naturally? You know, like the Fourth Street Live was shut down.
The other, the other communities that have these arts and enter, they call them different things, but.
Entertainment districts.
I'm a little confused about. Why we would do that?
Okay.
Why we, it wouldn't just be, why do we have to have an event to trigger it? What, why can't it just be, I'm having dinner at 4:40 Main, and now I want to go down to get a cookie at the Insomnia Cookie Shop, but I want to carry my wine with me. That's where I'm getting confused. I think we're.
Okay, not a problem. So going back to my comments just previously, with this being the first time we've done this, and we talked to other communities, there's some notes there in the handout. We didn't feel like we were ready to make that jump, that we wanted to step into this, to see what the real impacts, to see what these things are. Owensboro did the same process. They stepped into it with special events and now have changed, but they lived through it. We need to learn. We need to grow. We don't know what the impacts are gonna be to our police department, to our public works department, to our parks department. We wanted to be able to kind of step into it, and we didn't feel like that it was the right course to just go to 24/7, 24/365. Now, keep in mind, this is all staff recommendations. You all, as the board, can decide that you don't like my, our recommendations. I'm perfectly comfortable with that. I am quite used to it after 12 years of this, right?
There's enough communities out there that have done this, that have the data, that, that I don't see us being so far removed from other communities across the state. I want to say even Paintsville has an entertainment, arts and entertainment district. And, you know, they're, they're just, I mean, there's so many models out there that, that we're benefiting from their previous work, so to speak. And Owensboro is a perfect model, just down the road. I'm there all the time. And it just doesn't feel like, you know, it's just, it's just part of the thing that they do and the vibe in their downtown area. It's not a, I just, I don't know if we need to make it event triggered because, yeah, if I'm visiting out of town and I'm at the Corvette Bash and I want to come downtown, and I understand we have an entertainment district, but now it doesn't pertain to me because I'm not here for an event downtown.
Right.
It, it seems like it might absolutely confuse.
This is the recommendation that staff is bringing forward to you all that you all had asked for of January, from January of last year. Go ahead.
Looking at what triggers this, have you done some math using this? How many Friday and Saturday nights? How many weekends are we looking at per year based on previous events? Do you have that yet?
No, I don't have that yet.
Okay, no problem.
Just based on some of the scheduling. We do know we have been able to track 150 events, but that would count all the Hot Rods games. Not all the Hot Rods games are gonna trigger this. But we could see the concentration of this in that April to October. That's where most of that's gonna occur. Where it's gonna fall off is, once you hit December is when it really starts to fall off. Downtown lights up is kind of the last downtown triggering event. But there's still Skypack performances, but it just depends on when those are gonna be, if they're Tuesday nights versus Friday nights, based on the parameters that staff is bringing forth tonight. Mm-hmm. Go ahead.
The first question I have is basically, when you're talking about the arts and entertainment district, the districts that you were talking about in Owensboro, Louisville, and the other districts in Kentucky, or even outside of Kentucky, is that solely built on a open carry, you know, beverages?
Okay. So let me, let me get, let me get into that in our next section, and then I'll kind of talk about what this is, okay?
My, my second question is basically, it has something that you kind of touched on. And I think maybe it might be a concern to some of the business owners and some of the residents around there, and it's the patrolling. So I do think that a test of a, an initial test of right now would be a great thing to look at. So we'll have like a little bit more data. What will the patrolling or the police, what would that look like in the interim period?
Get to that in a follow-up section with the who part.
Got you.
Not a problem. All right, so let's talk about what. The EDC, I told you, will have its own brand, its own identity, its own guidelines, boundary, all that stuff. What, what it really is, is it allows for the transport of alcohol along the public space. That's what the law allows, okay? Right now, a licensed premise, so if you're a bar or a restaurant, doesn't matter, there are two different licenses, but they're considered licensed premise. So the state and the city has says, you have a license to serve alcohol on, in, in this area. Now, once you get to the door, that is the edge of that licensed premise. You all have approved sidewalk leases in the past where we lease a portion of our sidewalk to those businesses. That moves that line further out, but that line still exists, right? So it's about crossing that line. Right now, you're not supposed to leave a licensed premise with an alcoholic beverage. So that's where these EDCs in Ohio, the DORAs, designated outdoor recreation areas, there's CORAs, Creekside Outdoor Recreation Areas, states call them different things. In Kentucky, they're called EDCs, and they were built off destinations, right? And so what it allows a person to do is to take a drink from a licensed premise. What we are recommending is they put it in a cup. Now, the cup is important. We are recommending a clear cup that we would approve the brand for. It would have a QR code about all the information about what the area is, when it is, when it's not, you know, when it's activated, things like that. And so then that would give more education to people if they use the QR code, obviously. But then, then it's easily identifiable for the police. They can see, this is the cup. If you don't have the right cup, you ain't got the right cup. One thing that we did learn from Owensboro is don't get into the cup business. So we will not be the distributor of the cups. We will not be the owner of the cups. We will merely be the designer of the cups. We are working with a local supplier who is already in the beverage distribution business that is already distributing beverages to many of the establishments downtown to be the supplier of those cups, where we would own the brand and the image and all that stuff. But the businesses would have to have those cups from those places. So what it allows is, the city then becomes the licensee. The city holds the license. So you leave the licensed premise of the bar or the restaurant. Once you step across that line, now you're on the city's license, okay? So the alcohol never leaves licensed premise. We hold the license, not the establishments. And so that's what it is, and that's what the law allows under this EDC. So that is what it is. We talked about where it is. We talked about why it is. Talk about who. And so we, we expected some of the concerns to come up, and so we tried to think through what those could be. And I'll, I'll give you a brief overview, and I'm sure there's some others here that want to make comment tonight, too. So I don't want to speak on their behalf. But we also know that once this cup is on the sidewalk, people can take it somewhere else. Let me back up one second. I want to cover this first before I get into the who. This is not tailgating. If you've ever tailgated, you take your cooler to tailgate with you. You're not buying it from a, from a licensed vendor. You take your cooler with you. What we are talking about is buying from a licensed premise, taking that out and walking down another licensed premise, which is now sidewalk, and going into other venues. So Sue gave the example, I go have dinner at 4:40. I'm gonna go to the show at Skypack. I can have a drink with me as I walk down to the show at Skypack. It's about linking the licensed premises with the destinations. The destinations being, in this area really being the ballpark, Skypack, Circus Square, those event spaces. But also, it could be from licensed premise to licensed premise, right? You could be at 4:40 and you want to walk over to Gerard's, or you want to go up to Mellow Mushroom. It could be from licensed premise to licensed premise. So I want to make sure before I get in too far into the who, this is not bring your cooler and party on the lawn. That's tailgating. That goes on on the hill, okay? So let's go back to the who. Apologize for the diversion. So we looked at, we wanted to think about what happens to those cups. They, whenever they get used, they get empty. People throw them away. So the city has installed pedestrian trash cans in and around Fountain Square Park and around Circus Square Park. But there's really the only pedestrian trash cans that the city has installed in this area. So what we're proposing is to install additional pedestrian trash cans, and parks would daily empty those trash cans as part of this EDC. So that would be a service of the who would be Public Works and Parks. Also, Public Works would have to delineate, what are the boundaries? We have to show people signs, where are the boundaries? So you saw the map just a second ago. We have to place signs at those areas to, so help people identify that you are leaving the boundary. Once you leave this sidewalk and you go to that sidewalk across the street, now you're not on licensed premise. That's what the delineation of the boundaries. So Public Works would install those. In NCS, we are the activators. We're the communicators. When I say we, what I really mean is Talia, as our downtown development coordinator, would be the one to communicate with the, with the downtown businesses. Hey, it is active this weekend under the rules that we're recommending here. Working with police, working with and being the communication point back and forth between city government and our downtown businesses related to the EDC, the promotion, the education, the marketing. That's really where we come in as NCS. Police, this is, police would be the patrol side. And so police would be working the area, providing extra patrols. They would know when it is activated. And, but it also provides an opportunity for community interaction. You know, police aren't always the bad guys. They can just come up and talk to people. Believe it or not, they're, they're human beings, too. They can come up, have a conversation. So it's a, it's a, it's an opportunity for the police to engage with the community during these timeframes. The other side of this is there's, there's an important part to this, and it's our downtown businesses. And so here before you, I have them separated as licensed premise and unlicensed premise. So if you're a retail store, you're not a licensed premise. So, you know, it's not your business. You might be selling clothing or housewares or whatever, but their business isn't alcohol, so their business doesn't require an alcohol license. So they could partner in this in the sense that there's increased foot traffic, increased opportunity as downtown continues to grow and expand. But that's, there's still a line there. The alcohol can't come into their establishment because they are an unlicensed premise. It stops, there's a line, right? It stops because it's our license. Now, the licensed premises, those that already have an existing license, they share in the responsibility as well. And that is, they have to provide the cup. They have to buy the cup. But they also, can they bring it in from another? Cannot bring it into the, to the other new licensed premise. So if I had a, if I started at Gerard's and got my plastic cup and I walked down the street and I went to 4:40, I couldn't take that drink into 4:40. So I could take it across the sidewalk into the park, watch the fountain, but I can't take it into 4:40. I'm looking to Hillary to make sure I'm telling you all accurately. But then they also elect whether or not they want to participate. That licensed premise can say, no, we don't want to be a part of it, and that's fine. That is their decision. That is the business decision that they have to make. So they are a part of this as well. That's why we had the focus group. That's why we had the stakeholder meeting. So that is really the, the big part. If there's any questions about that, before I go over the, some of the commentary that we heard back, that's the who, what, when, where of an EDC in Kentucky.
Be answering the question I had, and I guess I'm just reiterating the question. For the arts and entertainment district, for the ones that were mentioned, was the EDC built around those? Or was the arts and entertainment already there? Because it sounds like when we're talking about arts and entertainment, here, we're mainly just talking about the EDC here, and that's it.
Let me, let me answer that in another way. We had defined an arts, so several years ago, we set about a project to do the downtown wayfinding. This was back whenever, this was before the streetscape, before any of that. And one of the things we had looked at was how to, how to navigate people in and around the downtown. And so we had come up with this concept of districts. To get people to a district, now, we didn't, we didn't move forward with this because obviously, these aren't on the signs. But we looked at this area where we're at as the government district. Because in the government district, you have City Hall, you have the County Courthouse, you have the Justice Center, you have BGMU. You have this concentration of government buildings. And so you could get somebody to the government district, and then they could navigate, you know, the four or five blocks. We looked at the medical district. Take a guess where that is? Down by Med Center, Graves Gilbert, right? All those offices. If you could get somebody down to that general four or five block area, then they could navigate within that area. Same thing as campus. You could call it the university district. It's just, they've already kind of named themselves. But if you get some people there, hold on, I'm getting there. If you get people there, then they can navigate of what particular building that they're looking for. So whenever we looked for this Fountain Square, Circus Square, we named it then the Arts and Entertainment District. And that was years ago as part of one of our original staff-led plans. So this concept of an arts and entertainment district is a, is a thought of, this is the concentration of where these things are going on. The EDC is a state regulation that allows for the movement of alcohol. We're moving forward, and we have been moving forward about trying to build an arts and entertainment district for years. That's where the reshaping of the park and Skypack and all these other amenities come from in this concentrated area.
So what I get, and correct me if I'm wrong, but what I was asking is basically, was those other cities and towns that have their arts and entertainment, was their EDC coming first? But what I get from what you're telling me is that the arts and entertainment district, we're already building arts and entertainment in this, this area that you're basically trying to put the EDC.
I, I don't, I don't know that, that I could answer for every city particularly. I know Owensboro had built their downtown long before they applied for an EDC. They had built their concentration of Smothers Park and the Convention Center and two hotels. And that area right along the riverfront had been built years before. They were the first non, really, they were the first downtown area to kind of push this in Kentucky. I can't talk about the other states. I can't talk about Maiswell. I can't talk about Paintsville. I can't talk about Paducah. But I remember I had toured with the, with the city manager at that time, Owensboro, to kind of see how all this came together. And then probably a year later, we're at a Home Rule Cities meeting, and they're saying, hey, we want to, we want to move forward with this. If they allowed it for Louisville, they allowed it for Newport, we think that they should allow it for Owensboro. So I think communities are identifying, this is where this thing is already taking place. This is where the concentration is going on, and we want to allow this other amenity to grow and support the thing that is already existing.
And now, the reason why I ask you that is because you're answering it for like the public. Because every time when I talk to someone from the public, they're basically thinking about the arts and entertainment district. They're not thinking about like something where EDC, where you're basically having a beverage going from one licensed business to the next. They're thinking about like this things that you basically already said, the ballpark, you know, just different events that we're coming from. That's what I'm trying to like clarify for the public. And thank you for your answer.
No problem.
I do want to correct one thing, so.
I do want to correct one thing. So
Yeah, please do.
So the statute allows for drinks to go from one licensed premise actually into another. Talking with other cities and businesses, restaurant owners don't like the idea of someone coming into their restaurant with a drink from another establishment, not knowing what's in that cup. They are, once they're on their premises, responsible for, you know, if they are out of control. So talking with other cities, although the ordinance reads that way, and all of the ordinances do, the cities don't allow it, and the other restaurants do not. They, they don't want other people coming into their restaurants with already full drinks. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Mr. Childers, the stakeholders meeting, can you briefly try to give us a sense of the consensus of that group? Obviously, because we are, our goal is to try to increase commerce of the downtown area. And again, I think answering a little bit of what Mr. Bailey is stating, we're trying to get a destination. So the EDC, arts and entertainment, is the idea of getting that destination, of that idea that we have this entity that exists. But kind of give us a, a sense of what the stakeholders are feeling.
I, I will do my best, but I am confident that if I misspeak, one of the, one of the people behind me will be sure to say, that's not what I said. So I will go ahead and give my disclaimer now. I'm trying to summarize about an hour and a half's worth of conversation, about 30 minutes for me, about an hour and a half of back and forth, lots of Q and A, right? And it really boils down to three main things that we heard. Education, cleanliness, and safety. A lot of the things that we heard were about the existing issues that are going on in downtown. And downtown is our concentration of where licensed premises exist. We have licensed premises all over the community, all over the city, right? We have them out Scottsville Road. We have them out all the major roads. But this is where you have a concentration. And whenever that occurs, it's unfortunate, as I told the group last Thursday, people ruin a lot of things. And there are people that just take advantage of that opportunity. There are people that overconsume. There are people who don't do it responsibly. And so it generates other issues. Some of that turns to, you know, they told reports of altercations about, I'm trying to use my words carefully here. Lack of restroom facilities in and around the area because of the consumption of alcohol. And also just general waste in and around the downtown. And, you know, after working down at City Hall Annex for several years, there was many times I would walk into City Hall with a beer bottle that I'd picked up off the front steps of City Hall, and Ms. Jackson would look at me and go, what are you doing with that beer bottle? It's a Tuesday. I said, I know, but I just picked it up off the steps. Because, you know, people leave things in a lot of places. And then just overall safety, and that comes from police presence and whether or not people feel safe in this environment, in this space. So those were the, the, the big things. And then how do you educate the public? And, and, you know, those of you all who've been at this for a while, public education is one of the most difficult things to do. And then we have, you know, it's, some of these parameters, and well, it's this line, not that line, and here's the street, and here's the this. And so those are things that we have to work on as a community, as a city, about what are some of the solutions. Those were the things that we heard based on those that work and live downtown. We had a, we had a good cross-section. It wasn't just the bar owners, or just the restaurant owners, or just the property owners, or just the residents. It was a real cross-section of who were invested in our downtown area. And so those are the kind of top three things. I'll leave all, some of the specifics out. I'll let them fill those in as they, as they, as they see fit. But those were, I guess, the big things. Of course, we were trying to address the cleanliness with the additional trashcans. We were trying to address the safety with, you know, police patrols. We were trying to address the education with the QR code and public information and social media and those things as, as this thing becomes active. So those are the things that, that we were trying to mitigate as part of our planning. But those are, those are concerns from the downtown businesses and, and the downtown stakeholders from that Thursday meeting.
Brent, one last question. I apologize, brother.
It don't matter.
Gaspur Brewing, why, I, when you look at the area that it includes, why did it not go a little bit further down State Street where Gaspur Brewing is actually at?
So whenever you look at Gaspur Brewing, they're on the corner of Third and State. And we have the line at Sixth and Chestnut. So that would be an additional three blocks down to include Gaspur Brewing. We felt like that extended too far. Felt like that that was too far. Especially given the what makes up that middle three blocks. Much more residential, and we've really tried to focus in on where is the concentration of things in and around the downtown area, and where do we suspect that future things would land? We felt like there was a higher likelihood that they would land in these areas. We excluded the Justice Center. We excluded some of these other institutional properties because chances are, City Hall's been here for a hundred and some odd years. It's going to be here for another hundred and some odd years. There's not a lot of opportunity for some of these other blocks to redevelop like there is in some of these areas.
Thank you.
Anything else before I turn it back over to you all?
I have a couple of questions. So were there any downtown stakeholders excited about this, or were they mostly reserved, or was there a mix?
It was a mix. It was a mix. There were some that were very much in favor of it. There were some that were in favor of it but have concerns about the past issues that are going on. There were some that were all in, some that were meh. I mean, it's, it's kind of across the board. So I don't want to speak for any of the individuals that are here tonight. That's, that's not my place. But no, this was not. I did tease them Thursday. I told them to light their torches before they came into City Hall, make sure they carried their pitchforks. But it really wasn't that. It was, it was, it was just a joke. It wasn't that over the top. This is the worst thing ever. It's, we have concerns about things that we've lived through and witnessed over the last several years. We don't want to make it worse. We want to make it better. That was, were some of the things that I heard. But also, I think many of them understand that the market for this is not necessarily the same market for some of the issues that they're having to endure and live with. And I think they recognize that as well, that it, you know, it's a different market dynamic as part of the attraction of that. But it doesn't mean, you know, if, if, if you've been told, oh, this is going to change, this is going to change, and nothing ever changed, that you believe now it's going to change. So I think some of them have some of those feelings as well.
Thank you. So when you talk to some of the other cities who already have an EDC, who, did you also talk to like the police chief there and find out about, you know, does this make the issues worse that we might already be seeing downtown? Or did they say it was neutral, or what was the feedback you got from other cities who have?
So whenever I talked to the gentleman in Owensboro, Tim, which would, he would be more of an equivalent to Talia, of kind of that type of position, he's, and he, he said, you know, we heard the exact same things. And he said, it has really been a non-issue. He said, our police chief fought it, thought it was the worst thing ever, drained on resources, and it couldn't be further from the truth. And I explained, well, that's great. I'm excited for you, but what's different is we're a college town. Owensboro, yes, they have uni, they have colleges. They're not a college town. The proximity to WKU and downtown is much greater. And this community has tried to get WKU students to spend money downtown for 50 years, right? How can we get more students downtown? But we use students as, as the litmus because of this, because at that age group, that 21, I'm going to start with 21. 21 to 24 is where you see higher concentrations of overindulgence. And so that's, that's some of that era. So that was also why we looked at those timeframes about the 10 o'clock. You know, when is that, when is that transition point? When is the appropriate time? When do, you know, when does the ballgame end? When does the Skypack show end? You know, when do those things, when is that right point? We didn't feel like 2:00 AM, which is state law closing time, or city closing time, is, we didn't feel like that was the right time. We want, we knew we wanted to back it up. And so that was really the main thing was from Owensboro, was police chief was a denier. Now they're all on board. They have made changes to theirs, and it's been a big success. And but our concern was still the impact and proximity of the university to this area.
My follow-up question is, were there things that they said they put in place to help make it a non-issue? Like what were they saying were the key things were to help it be a non-issue?
Don't get into the cup game was the main thing. Don't be a cup distributor. That helped. But on the community side, they really didn't have any of those issues. That was what they kept reiterating to me. It has been a non-issue. So there were, I didn't take it as there was anything specifically that they did. It was just, it really wasn't an issue. I talked to an establishment that has operated in two or three different states that has these, and he gave us good feedback from an operator side. So somebody that runs licensed premise. He was, that's where we got the Clear Cup from. The other thing that he had told us was don't buy expensive cups to reduce the amount of reuse that people get out of them. You know, buy cheaper, thinner cups that won't hold up so that they don't just keep using the cups over and over. But the Clear Cup was, was really, actually came from an establishment that has operated in other jurisdictions. And the other things were pretty much in line. A lot of the things that we're doing is how a lot of communities kind of start out to kind of test the waters. Is, is how we're approaching it is very similar to how other communities have approached it.
So one of the, the questions I have, you know, related to just thinking through how this works. If, if one of the major root causes of why we're having the issues kind of spill out that the downtown is facing now is because of, you know, over, overindulging, how do you keep that from getting even worse when you're going from one establishment to the next? And now this new establishment doesn't know how much you've already had?
No, I think that's the same issue that's going on right now. I don't think that, that issue changes. I think it comes down to the individual, and who is that individual? And looking at the timeframes and how do we direct this to the market that is going to consume more responsibly? I'm not going to say just because you're not a college student that you, that people can't consume irresponsibly. Or trying to typecast that all college students are in that. But really, that's what it comes down to. It's no different now than if someone goes into one establishment, has a couple of drinks, goes into the next establishment. They were okay. They serve them a couple more drinks because they didn't notice anything. And then they get to the third one, they have one more, and then bam, it all hits. And now it's an issue. It didn't, it wasn't the third establishment's fault. They, they didn't notice anything. They were doing all the things that they were supposed to do. It wasn't the first or the second. It was the individual is responsible for that. And the individuals have responsible for their actions. That's what the police department is there for, is to hold that individual responsible. So I think it's really about targeting the times and the market of who is going to benefit from this. One other thing that I mentioned in the Thursday meeting that I want to, that I want to make sure is understood and said here as part of this. We, as a community, have to understand, Ms. Rosansky talked about it earlier, about the workforce, that we are in the talent attraction game. We have to attract talent to our community to continue to grow and advance our economy. That is the, that is what is at stake for us. And we recognized that several years ago and have tried to create opportunities that are attractive to those individuals. And so we feel like this is an opportunity to attract those individuals for our community because these are growing in popularity in a lot of different states. And talent has the opportunity to pick and choose where it wants to live, to then invest and, you know, grow that local economy, be part of that active workforce. And so we feel like this is an attractive talent attractor for our community moving forward. So I wanted to get that back in there. That is something that I mentioned last Thursday.
So just staying on my train of thought here. So, you know, one of the, I guess, consequences of the overindulging that they're seeing already as an issue downtown is the mess that it leaves on the sidewalks, broken glass, vomit, other things.
Lots of bodily functions.
Yes, body fluids, good, good, good.
Yeah.
We'll use that. So if it ends at 10, do we have a crew that we're planning to go out and clean up at that point? Because I know there's a lot of, you know, some people are attracted to downtown for the nightlife. Other people are attracted to downtown because they go run in the mornings with their run group. And they're going to be doing that at 6:00 AM, right after these entertainment nights. So how do we make sure that downtown is also still a place where you can be healthy and active on the weekends following these events? Is, what's the plan for that?
The first part of that is, will we have a crew go out at 11, 12, 2, 3? No. We're not going to have a crew go out and do that. We don't have a crew. We don't have a crew that does that now. You know, we, our crews look at the amenities in, as peers of the other amenities in the community. So let me back up and explain what, what I mean by that. So our main downtown maintenance functions are performed by Parks Maintenance and our Public Works Operations. Public Works Operations takes care of right-of-way, so it's storm drains, sidewalks, things like that. Parks Maintenance is really taking care of the interior portions of the park. So those peer functions are, we have a lot of different parks. We have a lot of different sidewalks. And that's how we viewed traditionally from a maintenance perspective, how we view downtown as consistent with any other sidewalk, and how do we treat a city sidewalk. Now, from a development and investment perspective, we create, we look at downtown vastly different. Development and investment perspective, we don't build sidewalks anywhere else in the community like we do downtown, right? We don't do the landscaping. We don't do all the other amenities for sidewalks in our residential neighborhoods because it's cost, right? It's too expensive. But in downtown, we do. And so what some communities have done, and this, this group could explore that, or with support of the, of the business owners, is whenever you expand that level of service greater than what you are providing across the entire community, then, then someone is now benefiting from an extra level of service that they, that no one else has access to. And so what some communities have done is looked at what's called a business improvement district, where there is a opportunity for business owners to receive a higher level of service from the government than what they would have received otherwise. That's what other communities have done to address that. I'm not proposing that. I'm not saying that. I'm telling you that is, that is what other communities have done. Typically, that's through some form of a tax rate, a property tax, where there is a collection, there is a revenue source. Because the city is not going out pressure washing and cleaning sidewalks on the other, however many hundreds of miles of those that we have, just like we're not downtown. So that is an opportunity for that higher level of service to exist for this area. Whenever, talking about a little bit of a comparable here. In Paducah, for the licensed premise that want to participate, they have to pay a fee to participate as part of their EDC. We are not proposing a fee to the licensed premises. There is an application fee that the city will bear as a part of this. And we feel like that that's our contribution to this, and that should not be the contribution made up for the licensed premises to take part of that. They've got the cups, which are cheap cups. What other questions before you hear?
Sorry, I have just
Go ahead.
So I didn't see, because you mentioned this, I think, in the feedback, but about the bathrooms where we
Yes, that was my opportunity to craft that, to say how bodily fluids are disposed of is the best way. That's why I mentioned that as part of the comments that we heard back from. Of, there are no public restrooms. The only public restrooms that exist in the downtown is the old gas station at Circus Square. Whenever there are special events, the special event organizer is responsible for providing temporary restroom facilities adequate based on the size, right? If you have 500 people, you don't need near as many blue sheds. If you have 10,000 people, you need more blue sheds for people to use that. So right now, there are no restroom, public restroom facilities in the downtown. If people need to use the restroom in the downtown, they would use one of the establishments' restrooms while they're inside, having dinner, getting a drink, whatever they're doing in there. That's where that works. So my comments previously about lack of restrooms, while it was mentioned, was also focused on the disposal of bodily fluids out onto some of the public rights away.
So we are not planning to improve access to, or increase access to public more?
No, not as part of this, no.
Did, did Owensboro or any of the other cities you talked to, do they talk about this part of it?
Not that I recall. And when going through my tour up there, I don't recall seeing other public restrooms outside of their park facility.
That was my last one.
Okay.
For now.
It's all right. It's what I'm here for.
Thank you, Mr. Childers, for keeping that brief. Appreciate it.
Right, right.
All right. That concludes our working session. This time, we will open up for public comments. I'm sorry. I'm, I can't read. And we have, ah, we need a, we need a consensus of some sort to move on or not move on with this. Or if y'all want to make suggested changes, tonight would be the night before you, we do a first vote on this. So
I would like to hear from folks that are here first, yeah.
Stakeholders. But I know you want to hear from the stakeholders.
So are we doing this in public comment forum or just an open session, then having public, uh, help me out there. I'm confused.
I think, I think you need to allow the stakeholders to speak on this work session and then Hillary, we go back and if, if there's any general public comments, we go, we go back and pick those up.
And I want to say this too, the ordinance is very general, other than it does, you do have to define the boundaries in the ordinance. Other than that, all of the specifics we're talking about are more policies and procedures. They are not in the ordinance. So we do need to know before we do a first reading so that they know how to get, staff knows how to get ready for an EDC, but as far as the ordinance itself, what you would have to agree to is just, is just that you want to go forward with an ordinance and the map. That, that would be the extent of the ordinance. As far as hours, that can be started one way, changed later, how we choose events, all of that is more policy and staff related. It is not specifically in the ordinance.
I think the whole idea and the, and the goal, um, I've been talking about this for years and years and, and, you know, I, I think it's wonderful, but the goal is to, is to create a vibrant downtown that folks, A, want to come to, want to, want to do business with, want to, uh, maybe I get, maybe I get engaged down at 4:40 on Valentine's and I walk down to Mr. Steen's place and I buy a ring. I don't, you know, just connecting the, the downtown merchants with each other through art and entertainment and special events and things like that. So the goal is for us to create, I mean, we've spent an awful lot of money downtown. It, it's, it, it needs to have a vibrancy and, and become alive kind of a thing. So I, I think the focus needs to be on arts and entertainment and less on taking a cup of beer out of a restaurant to go to the next place. I, I just don't see that as being the thing. And I do appreciate Dana's point, um, college students are college students and, and they come out at night mostly. They stay up later than I do, I can guarantee you that. But I was one once. And I think a lot of them, um, you know, just, they don't have a lot of money, so they might stay home and, and entertain with their friends and so they're already arriving downtown, probably have had more than they needed. Um, you know, we've, we now have Uber and things like that that are helping us in that area, but, uh, but, but if we, if we just understand the end game, which is to create a place for folks to go in our beautiful downtown area and connect with merchants, um, you know, I, I think this is just a great idea. So it's, it's more for adults, not college kids. That's why you got to cut it off at, before the kids come down or the.
If you can, Commissioner Paragon, let's just go ahead and hear from our stakeholders if we can.
And just a quick question, I mean, just a quick comment. I definitely want to hear, I guess, from the stakeholders because that's exactly what we heard from Mr. Childers about the EDC. It wasn't just, uh, basically the arts and entertainment. What he just spelled out was basically having a cup with liquor in it and being able to go out in this premise and stuff. So I do want to hear from the business owners. I want to hear from the residents and kind of, I may even want to hear from like, um, our, our Bowling Green Police Department because we need to know how this is actually going to operate to make sure we do have procedures in place that's going to be safe, I guess, safe measures, uh, for our citizens, our citizens. So I think that we do need to kind of hear from them.
All right. The floor is open. I know we have a few people. If you're on the list. Hello.
Through the name and address thing.
You can just say your name.
Just state your name.
Jonathan Bryant. First, let me thank you for the opportunity to speak, come here and speak today about downtown and the new EDC. I made the decision five or six years ago to make Fountain Square my home, when I purchased my first property within the proposed EDC. Since then, I've worked on, worked with the city on multiple issues pertaining to living in the mixed-use zoning of central business, purchased and remodeled several other properties within the EDC, and got married and welcomed my wife into my apartment, thus turning it into our home. I would like, I would like to make it perfectly clear today, I love living on Fountain Square and we feel privileged to have the opportunity to take care of our historic home for the future generations. I also believe strongly that our, for, that for our downtown to succeed, it takes a mixture of bars, restaurants, retail, and family fun activities, and I am in full support of all the different tenant types. When purchasing, I researched the laws and ordinances and I wish I would have known they were not enforced. While considering the new EDC, my first reaction is I completely support the new development by the city and the growth opportunity for the area. However, to predict how well the city will manage the new rules and ordinances for the EDC, I must look at how we are doing and managing and enforcing our current situation. I am disappointed to inform you again that we are not doing well on many fronts already that the new EDC will negatively impact. Our noise ordinance, smoking ordinance, parking ordinances, PI laws, open container laws, mass lording ordinances, zoning rules, and code enforcement get overlooked in downtown on a daily basis already. While I'm not worried at all about a group of adults having an open container between stops downtown on a Friday or Saturday afternoon, we have to believe that these relaxed afternoon rules will spill over into the craziness we already experience after the adults leave downtown. We already experience a lot of tailgating from underage groups and this is not going to help. A permanent police presence, not only during and after EDC functions, but daily and more importantly, between the hours of 10:00 PM and 3:00 AM is the only way to calm some of this down. My investment group and I have invested heavily in cameras covering our properties downtown. These cameras record 24/7 and while I've decided not to bring pictures and videos showing proof of public urination and decent exposure, horrible overintoxication, people throwing up on sidewalks, reckless driving, public drug use, and many other things, but I have plenty of any of you all are any interested in seeing them. I will say that with our new system and larger, more obvious cameras does slow some of this down. The noise ordinance has been my largest complaint. Yes, I live next to a bar, yes, bars make noise. I understood this before purchasing the property. You can imagine my surprise that quickly after moving in, I made my first call to the police after trying to work with my neighbor and got told our noise ordinance is completely unenforceable. Not just downtown, but anywhere within the city. Why do we have an ordinance with no teeth? I relied on this and many others like it when making my decision to live downtown. Fights are common in downtown. Sometimes they're contained within personal property, but they often spill out into the streets. It's not uncommon to see fighting in the streets if you stay awake late enough. Since living downtown, I have seen people push through windows, large groups, sometimes more than 20 at once, fighting in the streets and even know of three people that have been lifeletted in Nashville due to the severity of their injuries. On an even more serious note, guns are starting to show up in these disagreements. I'm aware of two cases, but I'm sure there are more that, excuse me, I'm sure there have been more that just haven't been publicized. Trash should be a major topic this evening and while it seems trivial, I have a simple suggestion. Public Works does a great job, it might actually be Parks and Rec, I think I learned tonight. Uh, Parks and Rec does a great job taking care of Fountain Square Park, but could they please also take care of the sidewalks against the buildings that the city owns as well? Trash and human excrement are much easily handled by crews with tools such as trailer mounted pressure washers already used within the park. Then they are shopkeepers and landlords before opening for business each day. Another major issue is the lack of bathrooms. Due to this being a historic area, many of these businesses are already operating with grandfather facilities that are not adequate. The city has already allowed many of these businesses to expand their capacity through sidewalk leases and various outdoor venues without increasing capacity and the EDC is just going to stress the systems already in place even worse. While the city, county have a few public facilities, there simply aren't enough to solve the problem of people leaving themselves in public. In closing, I welcome the additional growth and focus on downtown. If we, as a city, can start following and enforcing the rules we already have in place all the time, not just while the EDC is active. I fear if we, as a city, don't do this, we will actually be stepping backwards into an even worse situation than we already have, thus resulting in lower property values, less private investment from development, and overall a less safe downtown. Thank you.
All right, the floor's still open.
Can I ask him a follow-up question just real quick? Um, would, just because you raised a lot of the stuff that, um, Mr. Childers said we would need to have a, a business incentive district, is that what you call it? Business improvement, would you be open to that sort of thing, if we could take care of some of these issues?
It sounds a whole lot like to me that you all want to cause the problem, then tax us to fix it. I mean, that, that's my immediate response.
Okay.
I, I would see it more being put on the license holders that are actually passing out the cups than property owners that are unlicensed places. I don't see how it's fair for, I hate to use Barbara Stewart's or the hearth room or any of the non-participating people to help pay to clean it back up. And if, if we look at it from an even larger standpoint, if you look at public parking lots that are used, or excuse me, private parking lots that are used as private, or private lots used as public lots during these busy events, um, the trash in those where people are tailgating, they're sitting between their cars, drinking their beers from home, their mixed drinks from home and trying not to buy liquor within the, uh, licensed establishments, they're leaving their trash everywhere. I, I, I feel sorry for the people that have to go out and deal with that on a daily basis.
Did you give a timeframe and you've installed security cameras?
I've had them probably four and a half years. I had a, a system of eight cameras. I'd say a year, year and a half ago, we've upgraded to 25 cameras encompassing almost an entire block from every different angle. Um, I live on the State Street side of the square. We can see front, backsides, the rear parking lots, all the way over to, uh, up and down Main and well over past Chestnut.
Are you, did, have you seen major issues up until 10:00 PM or is it in the wee hours of the morning?
Let, let me make this perfectly clear. I am in no way worried about adults having a couple beverages and walking from 4:40 Main to anywhere else. It doesn't, doesn't matter before 10 o'clock at night. What I'm scared of is that we're inviting more people to drink more openly, which is going to set a precedent for later on in the evening. I do not believe we have the ability to, number one, we don't enforce what we currently have. I mean, kids get out of Ubers all the time with tons of alcohol, throw them in the streets, throw them in the gutters, try to hide them from the bouncers. I mean, we, we pick up litter absolutely everywhere. And I, I don't think we're going to be able to tell these kids, hey, it's over, you know, pour that one out, especially not in the size of the s- space that we've set out. I mean, what is it, 25, 30 acres? And we, we don't have the police force or the, we, we don't have enough numbers to make it make sense. And it's not the adults. It, it's not Saturday afternoon at 6:00. It's well after that. And I mean, it can get scary at times. You see 20, 30, 40 people fighting out in the streets. Um, I've seen women carried away from bars, um, completely passed out, you know, two men packing her out. Um, I, I would have never believed, my wife says it all the time, Jonathan, I did not believe you. Before I lived here, I did not believe you. It, it's just not a good scene.
Do we have someone else from our stakeholders?
My name is Micah Rigdon. My name is Micah Rigdon. I'm one of the owners of Donna's Bar. Uh, thank you first for giving me the opportunity to speak. Um, I want to start by saying I've been in the bar industry for 13 years, starting here in Bowling Green, then going to Chicago, Illinois, and then Louisville, and then back to Bowling Green as a bar owner. Um, we opened just under two years ago at 332 East Main Avenue, and so we are included in this, uh, area and it pertains to us. I have a couple of issues that were brought up at that meeting that I don't feel were sufficiently addressed as far as like how to ease our concerns as the business owners and as the licensed members that are going to be responsible for providing the alcohol to this public. Um, I feel that we have a lack of infrastructure on the aspect of public restrooms for one, sanitation and police, but there's also consequences that are going to come more than just the lack of that and it being taxed as a result of problems that we didn't address at the start. Um, we are all for events downtown, but we want a controlled environment. Bars are responsible for providing a safe environment and to keep people from drinking in excess or acting out. That's what we do in our business areas. We have door guys for this, we have bartenders for this, we have staff to monitor and keep people from acting out and from allowing a situation to become exasperated and get out of hand, resulting in physical violence and then arrests. The idea is to deal with it before it becomes a problem rather than after it already has become one. Now, by removing the ability to monitor people allows for overconsumption, vandalism, violence, and property damage, as well as predatory situations where people can take advantage of those who are already too intoxicated to take care of themselves. Now, with the proposed area that they have so, suggested, it's too big, it's too broad. If you're looking at Fourth Street Live, if you're looking at Owensboro, you're noticing that these places are largely one street, one river walk. This is hill and dale as far as what they've got considered. Now, I don't think that we have reached this point as far as conversation and investment to drop it entirely. But what I would suggest, as a bar owner and as a facilitator who is not interested in buying these cups and selling these cups and having my repeat business walk out of my bar to go somewhere else and then potentially a truck and tailgate, because I promise you, it happens. It's happened in the back parking lot of the daily news behind my business several times within the last year. The only reason it's not happening right now is because it was cold. That's it. Uh, we tried to get police to act on it, but it's not necessarily going to be effective because they have to be doing a visible crime in order for the police to actually step in. The police then have to have the numbers to deal with the numbers of people that are having these block parties, which can range anywhere from 20, 30, 40 people. So it's one of those things where I can just come up and be like, hey, if y'all are here, you might get towed. That's the most impressive thing that I can say to them. And nine times out of 10, the tow companies were too busy to even come by and try anyway. So when we already have these problems and we already have these situations that are not being fully addressed and developed in such a way to where it can give us the comfort to continue to consider this as an option, the majority of the downtown bars on Fountain Square are not going to participate. We are not going to buy the cups. We are not going to allow anybody to leave our bars. We're going to police the same way we have. So what I would suggest is that this entertainment district gets smaller. Go to the area that it's already designed kind of for it, being the ballpark and Circus Square, 8th Avenue to 6th Avenue, State to Kentucky. It's a much smaller area, it is easier to control, there's more visibility, and that way the police may actually be able to police it without having to be overextended and having to try and deal with situations from one end of it to the other. Because to extend from mellow mushroom to the ballpark is irresponsible of us, to even really try and consider to police that entire thing with all of the roads and alleys and the ways that people can get around. And you say that college kids ain't going to come out before 10 o'clock, but I can argue that that's not the case either. And it's not just the ones who are 21. I still have to ID every single person that comes in because there are underage kids and their fake IDs are fantastic because they're made in China where they make the fake ID scanners. It's a wonderful business model they've got set up there. So it's one of those things that the police are not going to be able to monitor the situation of underage kids or people who are already overly intoxicated. That's not their job. That's our job. The bars, the bartenders, and the door staff. So what you're actually doing is you're forcing the police to take on responsibilities that I've got trained staff for, as well as asking me to have that business walk out rather than continue to stay and buy more drinks under our care and our supervision. I do believe we have an appropriate and a vibrant downtown already. We have issues that we need to deal with, yes, but I don't think that an open carry of alcohol is really what's necessary either. More attention to the arts and events and things along those lines, absolutely. But having an entertainment district start within 8th Avenue, 6th Avenue, State and Kentucky can also allow it to move and progress towards 5th Avenue where there is a need for development as opposed to the Fountain Square area, which we already have, we're already good. We don't need that much. We already have several businesses and retailers that are doing fine and it's not like we're going to not get the foot traffic if it's going to be in the Circus Square and Ballpark area anyway. We will. It just won't come with some of the potential problems and issues that this open carry situation would bring with it. Believe that's all I have to say.
Mr. Rigdon, I have like two questions for you. Uh, first, I don't even know if you would know if like the owners around you, uh, if they would be opposed to paying some type of license fee to have a higher level of services, kind of like the, some of the things that were mentioned by Mr. Childers and some of the things that you kind of mentioned yourself. That's the first question. And.
Now, the owners that I've mainly talked to are the bar owners that close at 2:00 AM because we're the ones that are going to be dealing with all of the flack that happens after the 10:00 AM line. Because we're the ones that are going to have to explain to people that. Because we're the ones that are going to have to explain to people that they're too intoxicated, they can't continue to have those cups, those cups don't count. It does like, there's the drinking public, which is a very difficult thing to like discuss any situation with like adults because they're already drunk. So that's the public we deal with is the after 10 o'clock situation when people have already been day drinking all day. Generally, most of our clientele don't start drinking until about 9:00 to 10:00 o'clock. So that's going to make our situation a little more of an issue, especially as it comes to public restrooms. There's not enough incentive to make me have to go through plumbers that often if it's going to be a situation where the public is going to use my restroom over and over again without necessarily buying anything while they're there. This already happens too, and it's just a situation that we have to deal with as is, but you're talking about boosting up numbers, which boosts up the plumbing in a very old building.
The second thing is that you kind of touched on it. Do you feel that you will have individuals that come in, and I think you kind of touched on it a little bit, to kind of just buy the cup, get one drink, and then they go to their car, kind of like tailgating, what you basically mentioned, to go pour their own liquor?
This already happens. It's already a thing that happens in the parking lot right behind my bar, people just drinking their own alcohol. Now you're just giving them the cup so that they can get away with it and not be bothered by any kind of officer or police force as to where they got the drink for that cup, and that also takes money out of the pockets of the bars as well because then they don't need to come in to get another drink. And we can't monitor their consumption in that process either.
Thank you.
No problem.
Caleb Hastings, thank you guys for taking your time tonight and hearing from all the stakeholders. I know it's really enjoyable for you all to hear complaints. I own a Airbnb, multiple properties downtown in the EDC. Want to talk tonight about my Airbnb because Commissioner Perrigan, you talked a lot about this becoming a destination that's vibrant and alive, which I like because that increases my business. Having people come to Bowling Green and want to return to Bowling Green and enjoy the downtown, I'm all for it. We need entertainment, we need restaurants, we need activities, we need events. I'm all for those things. And so I want to kind of walk you through one of maybe my patrons of my Airbnb coming downtown, enjoying a nice meal, enjoying a show or a ballgame, having a great evening just you and your spouse, and then you return back to the Airbnb and what would be a pleasant experience in a vibrant downtown that would bring you back gets turned into a nightmare when you can't go to sleep because of the music that's playing across the street at 2:00 o'clock in the morning or because of the people that have now congregated in your parking lot where your car is parked and you're worried about getting broke in, or they're trying to break into your Airbnb, or they're vandalizing the building next door with spray paint. Now you took a very great evening that I think you would describe as vibrant and alive and attractive, and you turned it into a nightmare. And the reason we have the nightmare is because we have ordinances that have no teeth. We have no ordinances for sound or noise after this 10 o'clock curfew that the police can enforce. We have no ordinances that the police are able to enforce because as Mr. Delaney, Officer Chief Delaney said, we're a little short-staffed in the police department. And I have a ton of respect for Chief Delaney. That was not a slight at all. I won't get into all my respect for him, but I do appreciate the work that he has done. We're just not equipped to enforce these ordinances, to enforce what we have currently, and that's what the stakeholders have really here complaining about. If you all want to push for more alcohol to be consumed in and around our businesses, then we really want to see you all push for more enforcement of the noise ordinance, the PIs, all the other things that Mr. Rigdon and Mr. Bryan have talked about, even Mr. Childers has brought up from their previous stakeholders. That's what I'm looking for. If you want me to continue to invest in Airbnbs downtown, and I'm not sure, I might be one of the few licensed and registered Airbnbs. I think the only place in the city that you can have Airbnbs is really around downtown. And I want to do more. I want my businesses to grow, and I need that enforcement from you all. I need the police to enforce noise, PIs, congregating after hours and carrying this alcohol after that 10 o'clock. I really need enforcement from you guys. Thank you.
Anyone else would like to address for this working session?
All right, my name is Bridget Langdon. I'm the general manager of Cliffsamore Irish Pub. The issues that have been talked about, I'm basically just piggybacking on at this point. But I think we're kind of putting the chicken before the egg, so to speak, in this scenario because if we don't have the infrastructure, we are harming downtown business that's already pre-existing and that's already thriving and doing very well by potentially causing issues that chase business away. Because we're dealing with, yes, 10 to 2:00 AM, things getting worse, messes being caused, vandalism, things that have already been spoken about. And if that's not being cleaned up, it's putting, it's putting the responsibilities on the businesses to come in when we open our doors in the morning and have to make sure that everything's presentable so we can continue to get business downtown and people can continue to come and complement our square or, you know, find this historic district charming, which I really do, and I've loved living here and working downtown, I have for about five years now. I kind of agree that the push might need to be more towards Circus Square Park and that direction. Somebody already brought up Gasper Brewing earlier. Now, I think they are too far at this point, but if we're trying to move that direction and trying to push for more business and development that direction, I think that that might be the way to move with this. Whereas the downtown square, I do know personally there are a lot of businesses that don't want to participate because we are looking at cleaning up the mess and all of the issues we're having later at night, especially from 10 to 2:00. I also believe that we do need heightened police force during those hours, especially after one of these events, not just during and throughout, because people are going to start drinking earlier and then they are going to be putting alcohol in those cups that they're carrying around. And the later it gets in the night, the more intoxication we see, the more issues we're having, and the more the weight is going on us as businesses to try to monitor it, tell people they can't come in with those cups, cut people off, call the police ourselves because they're not coming and showing up for that without us making calls and dealing with incidents or pulling camera footage or somebody, or an altercation happening that we're already having to stop and deal with before they can, they can reach us. So basically, my concerns with this are just that there's a lot of weight being put on us as businesses that we don't, that we are already dealing with, but we're not dealing with to this extent, and I don't know that it's beneficial. For me personally, I don't think it's benefiting, it's going to benefit the business that I work for that's already doing good revenue and already dealing with issues ourselves that are containable at this point in time. Thank you. That's, that's really all I have.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody, for being here tonight. My name is Jim Steen. I appreciate your time and everybody's input in it. I think it's a great idea. I think we have some issues that we need to take care of. So in Amsterdam, in Belgium, they have these restrooms that are out in parks and on the streets. When you go in, you can see out of them, but from the outside, it's a mirror. So you can't see in, you pay 50 cents, you use the restroom, it's clean. I think that's a great idea. We need more officers. So if we can come up as a community with how to recruit, pay more bonuses, I think that would be great. So that's, I think it's a great idea, but I would just be saying the same things that you've already heard. So, thanks.
Thank you. Our recommendation for this is that the commissioners take some time to...
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
I'm Lindsay Hinton.
I apologize.
I want to correct. I don't think any wife would ever be like, I have to correct a statement that my husband said. I have to correct something. So you all asked, when did we install cameras and did we notice anything noticeable different? We put in a much more visible camera system that affected the side of the square from Fountain Square Park over, not the Capitol Arts side, late spring of 2021. I have no idea if this has any reason with it, but as a visible example of what we are talking about when we say, what's the city commitment going to be with? Is there going to be cameras? Is there going to be a couple of foot police during these hours? Just something to assist. What can the city do just to make this a little bit easier? Our cameras were installed that spring. I think everybody remembers the downtown graffitiing. It was very severe. Every bit of that took place Capitol Arts side over and to the daily news. I do think it was a little news targeted because there was some social media propaganda, that type of thing. However, my husband and I found it very interesting that our half of the square was not tagged at all. And if you look at our home, there is a visible camera that hangs over our building, and if you go down the alley next to the alley between on the State Street Square, there are some visible cameras, and there was no graffiti in those areas. A couple of weeks later, there was also some graffitiing back around Tidballs. And again, we have, to protect our property, our investment, our vehicles, we do have visible cameras to prevent problems. Nothing on the back of those State Street side businesses were tagged. And so one of the things I often say professionally to people, you know, don't tell me what you can't do, tell me what you can. Nobody wants to hear all the things we can't do. Nobody wants to hear all the problems. I mean, you all have a thankless job and I appreciate all the time that you have today. But I think what the stakeholders are really asking is, is what other little things can the city do just to eliminate some of these concerns? Because there are a few proven things, you know, a foot police, a little presence. You know, if I know the police officers down at Mellow, I'm probably not going to drunk drive home from 4:40. I'm going to be more likely to call an Uber. If I know that in walking around downtown, I've been down at Donna's or, you know, I'm going to think twice about pulling my cooler out in the daily news parking lot if in walking down from my pizza, I saw a presence. And so I think that's just what we're asking for is what's, a few little things that can be done just to fix some of these issues. It's, it's not a complaint, it's just a, we're living in it, what can we do? Thanks.
Anyone else for the working session, for comments?
I just have a follow-up comment after, is that okay? First, I just want to thank the stakeholders for coming out twice in a short amount of time to make sure that our city officials are knowing the full sort of scope and everything that's, that we're dealing with. I am so grateful for what you shared, and I think, you know, what you are, I guess, visualizing with your stories is, we have experienced this explosive growth in our city, and it is so exciting, it is so wonderful. So these are important things for us to think about in terms of, okay, when we were a small town, we had a certain level of infrastructure and services and things that worked, and now that we've had this explosive growth, are there some things that we need to figure out that, you know, big cities have that we haven't had to really think about or worry about at this point? And so you've given me a lot to think about and process. I'm going to be asking, you know, you saw me ask a bunch of questions, I'm going to be asking a lot more questions based on your all's concerns and definitely have heard everything you've said, and will be talking with our, you know, police chief and public works and Parks Department because I think, you know, this definitely needs to be a win for our downtown business community and our residents. If we're not seeking a win for you all, then that doesn't really make sense. So that's, that will be my goal, is to make sure that we get to a win-win for everybody. And it sounds like we just have, you know, a lot more to sort of consider and think through and figure out if there's some tools and things that we don't have in place that we need to have to make sure we get there. So I want you all to know that you have been heard, and I'm so grateful for you sharing your wisdom that you have from all your experience downtown.
I would just like to say, thank you, I'm thankful your security cameras work. I work at a business downtown and we have security cameras, and unfortunately, several of our things were stolen around Christmas time, and we had the footage. It was returned with a nice funny note, and it was college students, and it did happen in the wee hours of morning. It always makes me think of something my mom always told me when I was growing up because I'd fuss about my curfew, and it was, nothing good ever happens after midnight. And I think all of this is a prom example, so thank you for sharing your stories.
I want to thank you all as well for coming, coming up for caring. You know, we all have a passion for our downtown. I think it shows in the investments that we've made, and, and we want those to pay off for you all, for all the merchants. And so we, you know, we need this. We need to understand what, where the challenges are, what the needs are, and yeah, you know, thank each one of you all for, for sharing your, your circumstances and ideas on how we can, we can help you.
I also wanted to thank you guys because I think that when you listen to people, you can find and get a better informed decision. And I appreciate that everyone, you have an Airbnb owner, you have someone that lives downtown, you have another person that runs a, I think it's Clifford's or it's the Irish Bar?
Cliffsamore.
Cliffsamore. And then you have someone else that basically came here and said he's a business owner as well and kind of diddled everything. What I've heard today, there's a lot of infrastructure problems that we have, and there's a lot of safety concerns that you guys have as well. And I'm glad that I got to hear that because I'm not down here during that time, and I know that you guys get to see more than someone that's not here, you know, after 11 or 12 o'clock and stuff. I know, I know that our Bowling Green Police Department, they're one of the finest, in my opinion, in Kentucky, and I know that they're understaffed and stuff, but I also want to make sure that we have like the safety that's there. Kind of like Commissioner Beasley Brown, I want to find out, how can we get to the win-win? And I know that the arts of entertainment, this is an amenity, kind of like what Mr. Childers said, to kind of bring more business. And I believe that everybody here wants to bring more business here, whether it's restricted, where we're at, because I go down, my wife's from, you know, the Louisville area, so you know, the live area is not as big as what a lot of people think. It's actually self-contained. So I've been there, so I do know that it might be something that can help us out to build more, you know, revenue in the future and more terrorism. But thank you guys for just giving your input.
All right. So this working session, this is my recommendation, and I'd like to get a consensus from the commissioners. My recommendation is that this is first blush. We've heard a lot of information. I'm a little bit concerned that businesses are more concerned about not participating because the goal is to increase businesses, and it is a crawl, walk, run process. No one thinks that we can hit this out of the park on the first try. However, we believe in the vision of this, and this is the commissioner's goal, and this has been our goal and remains our goal. And so what I recommend is that commissioners take some time to review this, come back with some of the questions, actually to Mr. Mizel, to Mr. Childers, to Talia, because they're building this for us because we've asked them to. We've hired Talia to come onboard, and we're very excited about bringing together solutions that we've never had an entity before in our city, to accomplish. And this is a first. So we're making efforts for, on behalf of all our citizens, to increase commerce for downtown, to balance what you see in Scottsville Road to downtown commerce. So commissioners, Sue, you recommend, you agree with that?
That's a great idea.
Melinda? Dana?
You're saying come back and we'll have another opportunity to sort of have a work session again before any type of talk of a first reading?
We, we as commissioners can send our questions and can send our input to Mr. Childers, and he can incorporate that for a later decision.
Well, I will say, Mayor, if I may, one thing I'm taking away from this is we need ordinances with teeth. So I think we need to, not just this area...
But that existed already as, as a whole, and we've always had that discussion.
Exactly. So we can address that, address that while we're looking at this.
Understand.
It's one of my biggest concerns.
I agree with you, Linda.
So three for tabling?
Yes, definitely. Yes, definitely tabling, but I guess I'm just, um, trying to make sure we have another opportunity to ask questions and get information without all of us hounding, all five of us asking the same person the same five questions five different times. Like, is there another chance for us to learn together and figure out what our next steps are before we vote? If that's possible to...
Oh, I'll have to look to our city manager to answer that question.
Can we ask some little questions to these folks, Leah, Brent, Chief Delaney, and then all, and then have them compiled and sent to us? And so we understand?
Yes, I understand that, right. But part of it is, like, as we're learning about this, it just one little thing we learn kind of spurs another question. And so I just feel like, because there is so many questions and there's so many different levels, I would benefit from another chance to be able to learn some more, is, be able to have some back and forth before we vote again. I would prefer to learn more about it in that way with you all, um, but I'm just one vote, if y'all just want to collect information and vote.
So, do you want another work session before the first vote?
I'd like to first have all the questions that everybody's asking, so that we can, like you said, form, form questions or enable or solution to all of this, and not oppose another work session.
Can we not, if we do questions that you, like, if you have a question you're going to send to Mr. Childers, you put all of us on it? So I know not to ask him the same questions? You can't do that? Okay, it needs to be in a work session? Okay.
Well, they can compile it and send it to us.
Right, they could take it out with the agenda as part of the work session. Yeah. Preparatory materials, and then you, you all can talk about it at another work session.
Just so we know what everybody's concerns are, what they're trying to solve. That would make the next...
So we have three that want to have an additional work session. We are going to send our questions and our input to Mr. Childers, CC, Mr. Mizel.
I don't think you'd let me even say yes or no to it.
I, I'm just putting on what we're agreeing to or not agreeing to.
I know, but I'd like to put it, I know you said three. I don't have a, I'm not opposed to it. So it's actually four? Four, yes.
Do we have five? All right, we have five. All right, working session is over at this one.
I would request that you all get those to us ASAP, because we, we start putting together the next meeting a week from tomorrow. So, that's how, that's how fast we move.
Do we have to have it in two weeks?
And we do not have an April, we didn't have a first meeting in April either that's been postponed or canceled due to spring break, so we're, if, if we're going to do this, we need to move along. If you don't want to do it, uh, it's, it's totally up to you all, but that's what, that's the under, that's the time constraints we're under.
Are you saying do the entertainment district? I don't think I've heard anybody say that we're against it, and I don't even think the stakeholders are against it. They just want to know the details of how we're going to craft stronger ordinances and make it safe and, you know...
When you said arts and entertainment district, are you meaning the E, the, what's it called? The?
EDC.
The EDC?
Entertainment Destination Center.
Okay, because I feel like there's two separate things, because I felt like, uh, Brent said that we've been working on arts and entertainment district for a long time, and that's just a designation of a, of a place where we want to encourage more arts and entertainment versus a, but, but you're talking about the, I, I am not right now saying that I support, um, an ED, EBA. So no, I, I would like more time to learn. I have way too many questions.
So the timeline works like this, we have to have two readings of an ordinance prior to applying for the license. Once the ordinance has passed two readings, then we submit the license, and the state typically responds within 30 days. They come down and do, um, they walk the area, and then they either grant or deny the license within 30 days. So, so you also have to advertise for 30 days while that license is pending. So, you're talking about two ordinance readings, what Jeff's talking about timelines is two ordinance readings and a, um, the state time period. There's no particular time period we have to do that in. It's, he's just letting you all know if, for example, you wanted to start in May or June or those summer areas, that's, that's the timeframe we're working in.
But the state requires us to go ahead and approve it with two readings before we even submit. Then you're into a 30-day waiting period at, once we submit.
Correct, that's correct.
Like you said, we don't have to do it within the next meeting though, right? We can do it like within two months as opposed to, to the next meeting?
Pushes it back.
Right, you could do it next year, you could never do it. It's, there's no, not a timeframe. It's just knowing that you do have to get two readings in, we don't have a meeting that first of April, and then the state's 30 days start once we apply.
So, let's go back to what we were stating. We almost had a unanimous five, and then we didn't after that, of we table this, but if we table this, then all of our questions have to be responded to or given and responded before the next commission meeting, and that next commission meeting actually has to have all input, and by next Wednesday, this, next Wednesday.
I don't think that's enough time, I think that we need to table this a little bit longer. It's not going to give us enough time, it's not going to give the experts enough time to answer it and go through everything. It's not going to give the, the business owners and the people that live there enough time to basically have like some type of input in there as well. I think that we'll be rushing it at this point.
I apologize, I think that we'll be rushing it at this point, I don't think there'll be enough time. I think it needs to be tabled at a very minimum for 60 to 90 days.
Well, we could have another working session two weeks from now. So that gives us time, but we have to give our input, which we, I think I kind of have an insight what my input is already from this meeting, what I would like to ask questions and what I would like to try to craft the response that we do for an EDC as a crawl, walk, run process.
Have, have you though ever seen any of this before today, this moment?
No, I have not.
I agree with you, Todd, I, I think I'd go along with that.
I, like, as, I didn't even get, it wasn't even our packet, right, to review and think of questions, like, I just saw this when the public did. And so, yes, so I'm just saying, this, I need time to, um, ask some questions, get some responses, ask some more questions, and that, one week to do that, I think we just need to have time to get it right.
Having, having a working session doesn't stop us, Dana, it continues the conversation.
Okay.
So, I don't...
It doesn't have to be our only working session is what you're saying.
Exactly.
Okay, that sounds fine.
So we have a second working session in two weeks from now, which continues us to allow to have the conversation, and we can continue to give input for the next Board of Commission that meets in two weeks.
I can agree to that.
Yes.
I was looking to you, Todd, but if this is going to be a second working session, and we may actually have a third, I'm not opposed to it. I still think that to have the experts to fully understand and go over through everything, they're going to have to basically get time themselves to put this thing together. So at this time, I would say if it's going to be this quick and we have to have the questions with, before a day or two, I would have to say no. There could be questions that come up, like, uh, Commissioner Beasley Brown said, and you said as well, we looked at this today. I think that it's going to have to have a little bit more time to be thought out.
I think you misunderstood me, Carlos. The second working session will still give us the same ability we were making at this right moment. We could have a third, we could have a fourth, it kicks the can down the road two weeks. It doesn't state when we put the EDC in place.
A work session gives the five of you the opportunity to be together and discuss this and work out the kinks. So I would recommend that, having as many as you need to, for all five of you to get comfortable with it and decide.
I, I think this is what you want.
And I get that, I don't have any objections to that, and, and you're right. But the only thing is that we're going to have another working session, because there could be questions that we didn't, uh, fully ask at that time, and it's going to put the EDC off a little bit further. It'd be nice just to make sure that we get all the questions that we're going to have, and make sure that they gives them enough time to basically answer us at that time, so we don't have, we can move forward with the EDC.
It may not, Carlos, it may, it may continue more discussion, and I honestly think we'd rather have it right than not have it, and push it down the road than rush it. And I think you feel the same way, I think you're stating the same thing.
If we don't have this thing up by June, it's not the end of the world, so we're, we're, we're not, staff was trying not to slow anything down and keep things moving, and we're, we're not holding up the train, so. And what we tried to do tonight is start simple. With anything new, I believe in simplicity, and you start slow and you start simple, and this is just a starting point for you guys to work from, similar to what we did with ARPA. We gave you a starting point with ARPA, and that's all it was, and that this is for you guys to digest, consider what was said tonight, and make recommendations on how we, uh, how you would like to proceed, what changes you would like to make, how you respond to what was said tonight. And that's what I would ask for, is as you, as you guys are developing ideas, that you keep in mind what was said tonight and give us specific directions and details on how we get this thing, or how you would like it to work, if you want it to, if you want it to go and work.
I believe we're united, we're going to have a second working session in two weeks. We're going to send our questions, and we don't have a status of what the move forward is at this moment, so thank you. All right. Now, do we have any comments? This concludes our meeting, our next meeting will be in two weeks. We're adjourned, thank you.